While we're ordered, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands.
We'll call these.
Kushner.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
For the city council minutes.
Move to approve.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adoption of agenda.
Motion to approve agenda. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a proclamation tonight, Small Business Saturday Proclamation twenty twenty five. Who wants to come up? Small Business Saturday, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty five proclamation. Whereas November twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty five is Small Business Saturday and offers a day dedicated to celebrating small businesses and recognizing the vital contributions they make to our community. And whereas consumers who shop at local small businesses directly significantly contribute to the strength and vitality of Warrensburg's economy, supporting continued growth, entrepreneurship, and prosperity for our community. And whereas Warrensburg's community of small business owners are pivotal to the economic future as the drivers of innovation and job creation and represent the very essence of the American dream, as well as the time honored ideals of hard work and individual responsibility. And whereas the city of Warrensburg, Warrensburg Chamber of Commerce, Warrensburg Convention of Visitors Bureau, Warrensburg Main Street collaborate through the Love What's Local Initiative to educate and encourage local residents to purchase local goods and use local services. And whereas the twenty twenty five campaign message for Shop Small Saturday is Shop Local, Show Love. Serving as a reminder to continue supporting small businesses, not just on one day, but all year long. Now therefore, I approach the Euler Mayor, along with the City Council of the City of Warrensburg, do hereby proclaim November twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, a Small Business Saturday, and urge all citizens to support our local businesses that create jobs, strengthen our economy, and make Warrensburg a vibrant place to live, work, and visit, dated this tenth day in November twenty twenty five. We have a presentation tonight we're very excited about. Wiggles and Giggles Sensory Adventure Zone Presentation, presented by Tiffany Ford, founder of the Autism Awesome Stronger Together Inc., a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Thanks Tiffany.
Sorry, I'm just checking to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. Before I tell you what we are building, I would like to tell you what we're trying to stop. A four year old having a meltdown in Kansas City parking lot because therapy happened during naptime. A mom crying in her car after the third missed workday this month. A family spending four hundred dollars on gas just to access services that should have already existed here. I'm Harley Warren, a two year Warrensburg resident, and I've been helping Autism Stronger Together to change this reality. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you guys. Right now, Warrensburg families are driving two to four hours every week for basic services, thousands spent on gas, missing work, burning out. And here's what matters to this council, that money is leaving Warrensburg. We estimate over six hundred and eighty thousand annually going to Kansas City and Columbia instead. That's not just a social service problem, that's an economic development problem. We're building Wiggles and Giggles, a sensory adventure zone, Missouri's first all inclusive neurodivergent family hub. Everything under one roof, therapy, sensory play, life skills, parent support. First in Missouri, and we're building it right here in Warrensburg. Here's what we need to make this happen, a property partnership, that's our critical risk, our critical ask, sorry. We need Warrensburg to provide us or help us secure a building thirty five hundred square feet through donation, favorable lease, rent to own, or whatever creative arrangement works. Without property, we spend twelve to eighteen months fundraising just for a building, and we open in twenty thirty or later. That's the difference, that's what we're asking for. This is not just a social service, it's an economic development. We're, we project earning over four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand in healthcare spending annually, creating twelve to twenty quality jobs, positioning Warrensburg as Missouri's leader. And here's your return on investment. If the city provides one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand property value, the community can get can get an estimated five point eight million to nine point five million back over five years. That's a thirty to one or a fifty to one return. Long term, we envision partnering with healthcare facility in Warrensburg that wants to learn. Western Missouri Medical Center, dental practices, vision providers, will train them. They'll serve neurodivergent patients better, they'll generate new revenue, everyone wins. But none of this happens without a building. This is a homegrown solution by a Warrensburg resident for Warrensburg families. In two years, we, I want to stand here and tell you about the family who moved to Warrensburg because of what we built together. With your property partnership, it happens in twenty twenty eight, and I thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Appreciate you coming, and I'll say councilperson Latari, thanks for organizing this presentation, thanks Tiffany.
Ladies did it all themselves.
We're very.
Yeah.
Because we're moms and we're, we have neurodivergent children, we're also neurodivergent, so it's very important for us, and I'm from Tennessee. And you know, Nashville, I had to drive to Nashville for my children every week. It was speech therapy, occupational therapy, and then I moved to Warrensburg because I thought it would be funny to live somewhere with the same last name, because my last name is Warren, and I mean, the prices were cheaper, the, I love the community. I would love to see something here where families aren't struggling just to get their kids help.
What size building are you looking for?
Thirty five hundred square feet.
Any questions for?
Is this something that could be part of the new building that the school is putting in?
Um, I mean, I can, we, I'm the community director of engagement, so that would be, I mean, a Tiffany question, because she's the CEO, but I'm pretty sure that we can talk to the schools about it, I mean.
Because they're putting, you know, they are putting in an early childhood development center.
Kids go to Ridgeview, so I know Miss Fox, uh, my children go to Ridgeview, so they'll be going to the preschool over there. So I can definitely speak with Miss Fox, because we want to work with the school districts. We want to work with everybody that wants to work with us, but we have to have the city back us because we're so small. We don't, we don't have the corporations, we don't have the big push, it's moms out here trying to make something happen.
So the services that you need are, um, are they typically not provided as part of the school? I'm not real familiar with everything, but so, um.
I mean, I went to Maple Grove, I didn't go to Maple Grove, my kids went to Maple Grove, I homeschool them now because they were having such a hard time transitioning into the school system. And I mean, I thought it would be better that they learn from me and try and adjust to life than trying to figure out how to fit in. But Maple Grove has been great, it's just like the upper schools, as it gets older, kids are meaner. So we're just trying to give parents the support, kind of like an AA group, where they can come to us, talk about us, talk about the hard times, the good times, the laugh, the wiggles, the giggles. And you know, um, we're trying to provide systems for kids too. We have a meeting coming up November twenty third, where we're going to feel out the parents in the area, homeschooled and schooled, to see what they are lacking and what we could benefit from with each other.
And it's not necessarily.
Providing services for, to the children, but also services to the family and the, uh, as, um, like group therapy or something. Okay.
It's more than just the schools, the schools are great, the schools are really great here, and they're getting more and more knowledgeable. It's more on the medical side, the therapy side. We're on Medicaid, we have to go all the way to Kansas City just for my daughter to get vision. That's crazy, there's six vision places around here, and we have to go all the way to Kansas City just for her to get vision.
Yeah, I have to go to children's pharmacy because my son has bifocals in his glasses, his eyesight's really poor. Um, the, we went to Walmart and they accepted our insurance, but he, the doctor referred us out because he was like, this is too complicated, I can't do this. You would have better luck at Children's Mercy. So every six months, that's a bill that I'm having to foot. Not to mention Medicaid doesn't necessarily pay for the glasses that he won't break.
Right.
Yeah.
So my thought is you vision them all, and inside this mall you have therapy, you have the doctor's office, you have a dentist's office, you have classrooms, you have a sensory play, it's literally a community inside of a community where you bring your child in. As a parent, you relax, you can breathe, you can go talk to other parents. While your child might go from a dentist appointment to a doctor's appointment to a learning activity for the day. All done, one place, right here in Warrensburg, right here at home, right here where the money needs to stay.
Would you, um, hope to be able to train local dentists, physicians?
That's what we're going to do to keep the money here in Warrensburg is to work with the people here in Warrensburg already to get them trained and up to date and educated so we can help them, then help us, so as we grow, because we want to become nationwide. So as we grow, we take the people with us so that everything is done correctly.
And I thought connections and purpose health and everyone's telling me how we, they would benefit for something like that here. Because company sales can only go so far, they offer individual therapy and all that, but it only goes so far.
May I ask, do you have a written proposal prepared?
We do, I have it all set back there for you guys, like, because we have a whole packet for you, we didn't want to have to throw all of that for you.
Gotcha.
Exactly, we gave you guys all of this.
The Johnson County Board of Services, are they able to provide some of the services that you're needing?
They actually, that's where our meeting places are going to be at. So we go a week before the meetings, we do a conference, see what we need to do collectively with me, Ashley and Tiffany. And then every month, we're looking to make a meeting there for a support system. Melissa Frye's been really great.
Right, she's awesome.
She's awesome, and so is Abby, the receptionist.
Yeah.
I mean, we're reaching out for the resources, we just need a building to get it started. Me and my daughter are fundraising with little slack packets that we will provide with you to get wiggles and giggles off the ground.
Do you, do you know of the building?
We've been looking around, but it's more on, when you start to talk to people, they want to start talking money. And that's fine, but as soon as I say, well, I'm a nonprofit and, well, unfortunately, we, we don't know how to do that, or we can't do, or I just don't get a call back. I've gotten a lot of that around here, no callbacks, or we'll start helping and then we just kind of drop off, which is fine, because I'm going to keep going. Yes, these babies around here, even the adults, I mean, it's really something that needs to go, and we're trying to make it even where it's profitable, because we'll have the insurance, the sliding scale, that's where the nonprofit comes in, because no family needs to be turned away.
Do you have an estimate, how many children might use this? Do you have a?
In the first year, we're estimating forty to sixty families. And that's just with the basic thirty five hundred square feet, just getting it off the ground. After that, it's phenomenal. The sky's the limit, we just need our community and our city to back us.
And we're, we're here to push it.
Have you, um, approached the county?
The county.
I came here, this is where I came.
Do you have plans to approach the county for assistance also?
Wherever I need to go, we will go, we just need the direction. Like I said, we're a bunch of moms really out here just figuring it out as we go, trying to make it happen.
Yeah, but I don't know what the options are for exploring, you know, what kind of city properties there might be. Um, I, we did talk briefly about location one, which zombie county economic development coordinates as far as buildings that are available, you know, for rent or purchase, but, um, I would, I, I was just happy to have you all come here tonight and, and, and us be able to ask questions. And so from here, I'm not sure where we go as far as, are there city facilities, are there, are there city buildings we can look at? Are there other ways that the city can help if we don't have properties that we can give or partially donate? Like, I don't know what the next step might be.
Right.
I concur.
Well, we'll work on the next step, but thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Any other things for us or?
I mean, we'll either, we'll either work on the buildings as well, I mean, we'll get dirty down, whatever we got to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, we'll, um, we'll talk with staff, because they're the ones who know the, kind of the, the more details about that, about what, what are we allowed to do? What, you know, what kind of legal ramifications are there? Um, and again, I honestly don't know if there are city owned properties that would be a possibility, or if there's just some other way the city could be helpful to try to help you find a property.
We're open to new software.
It would be very exciting to have this in town.
It would be, it'd be a great venture, and it, it'd be a mapping for Warrensburg. This, this is what Warrensburg means, we're right here in the middle of everything with nothing, but with so much to offer. Yeah, yeah. We have the air force that's right here, we have people that are coming through to go to Columbia to offer services that we can offer right here.
Right.
We have a training hospital now, so why not train them in the neurodivergent?
Yeah, I could see an organization, maybe city, county, and region, um, there's regional organizations too, because you've been, uh, bringing people in from outside here, so.
It could be really great, we just, we just have to envision it and just go.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
We've also gotten numerous letters to from parents, uh, social workers, school people, um, it was placed in the agenda. I don't know if that's like the agenda.
If I, if I may suggest, I don't think it's something that we will act on tonight.
Yeah.
You know, we certainly need lots of information, lots of questions answered, so, uh, if you, I, uh, hopefully you understand our positions with that.
Everyone needs to think about it, sleep on it.
Well, I'll be happy to follow up with staff and follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for being so kind.
Item six point two, recognition award for the Warrensburg Fire Department, a certificate of excellence award presented by, presented to Fire Chief Kenneth D. Jennings, CFO, and Warrensburg Fire Department by Continental Western Group Fire PAC with Mike Keith Insurance, presented by Christian Delosier, CIC, CWCA, Chief Executive Officer, Mike Keith.
Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening, we've got the great pleasure of presenting an award to you, as you just mentioned. Um, as we work with you on an annual basis, there are five primary ways that you all can manage the risk of running the city. You can avoid risk, retain risk, control risk, transfer risk, and then what we can't do with those four things, we finance the risk through an insurance policy that we typically talk about each year. Part of the control is, uh, investing in either protective equipment or loss control. Could be, uh, online, uh, risk and safety, and that's what the fire department has done here. Um, so tonight, we are here to recognize that over the past five years, and I've got a letter here from Continental Western, and it's written and, um, signed by the Director of Commercial Underwriting. And this is over twelve, this letter comes from, for over twelve states is where this product is represented. Over the past five years, they have consistently led their peers, referring to Warrensburg Fire Department, in course completions demonstrating their commitment to continuous learning, proactive risk assessments, and risk prevention. In either twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, the Warrensburg Fire Department was the number one of twelve states. And you could with a straight face say, because they're only operating in twelve states, the number one in the country. The number one in the country. So on behalf of Mike Keith Insurance, and I've got a associate here with me, Jake, Jake Farnsworth. Um, we would like to present Chief Jennings and his team with this award certificate of commitment to excellence in training. I forgot to mention, while this is a very nice presentation, what does it actually mean? Um, there are statistics out there that show that for every dollar that we invest in loss control and training, you're saving three to four dollars in prevention from accidents, lost time, so it is a well worth endeavor, we commend you for it all.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Item seven, public comment on ordinance approving a Flock safety agreement for public safety purposes. I'm just going to read kind of a quick background of the meetings we've had to get to this point, and then you'll be welcome, come up, make your comments. Uh, where this started, August eighteenth, uh, there's a city council retreat. There's a comprehensive financial model presented, um, in there was a, uh, notation uh, by the police department for sixteen stationary license plate readers. Uh, August twenty fifth, had a reading, a reading only for first reading of ordinance adopting the fiscal year annual budget. It was ordinance, uh, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year October one for the city of Warrensburg, presented by city manager Mike Scragg for sixteen stationary LPRs in that budget. Uh, September ninth, city council's second reading of a ordinance adopting a fiscal year annual budget, ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October one for the city of Warrensburg, presented by Mike Scragg, city manager for sixteen, again, within that budget, sixteen stationary LPRs, at a zero budget impact. Uh, Monday, October thirteenth, city council, seven point one, first reading of ordinance approving a Flock safety agreement for public safety purposes. Uh, it was an ordinance authorized a city manager to enter into an agreement with Flock Safety for the installation of use of license plate recognition cameras for public safety purposes, presented by Chief Andrew Munsterman. Um, within that, there was, uh, documents, council letter and ordinance for Flock Safety twenty twenty five. Uh, compilation of Flock articles, uh, Flock cameras currently in the city, Flock literature, Flock safety, law enforcement agreement, sole source letter, Warrensburg itemized quote, and the W P D A L P R policy. Monday, October tenth, we had a second reading of ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, November tenth today would be the second reading of ordinance. And in that would be, uh, presented by Chief Munsterman, which would be a council letter and ordinance for Flock Safety. Police Department response to, uh, councilperson Latari's questions. Uh, police department response for Flock questions to councilperson Latari. Uh, Missouri State statute, uh, Warrensburg, Missouri response. Flocks answers for the councilperson, for councilperson Latari. Flock answer to councilperson Latari's questions, council review of terms and conditions, compilation of Flock articles, Flock literature, Flock cameras currently in the city, sole source letter, uh, W P D A L P R policy, and the Flock New Agreement and Master Service Agreement, um, terms and conditions. So the way this works, it's, it's a public comment, uh, we set this aside after the last council meeting. So we have your name here, your name will be called, if you would, just come up, state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments, and appreciate everybody coming out. It, it's, uh, it's really nice to see people get involved in city government, so thank you so much. First one is Heath Jepson, if you come forward and state your address, please.
Hello, my name's Heath Jepson, I live at one oh two Southwest Ninety Fifth Road. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, and I'm also a cybersecurity professional with over twenty years securing critical infrastructure. I served with FEMA, the USDA, and the United States Air Force. I was Industrial Control Systems Manager at Aviano Air Base in Italy. I also secured top secret networks right here at Whitman in support of the B two mission. Today, I'm a senior cybersecurity analyst, safeguarding our water and energy sectors. I understand the stakes of vulnerable systems with a depth few can match. Being that there's no constitutional right to privacy in public space, just four days ago, rightly so, a judge ruled that Flock camera data is public record. In plain terms, these timestamped vehicle scans, license plates, makes, models, locations can be requested by members of the public. That doesn't just mean reporters or researchers, it also means people with bad intent. I would rather that criminals and sex offenders not have the ability to track my vehicle. I would rather they not know when I'm away and my wife is home alone. I would rather that criminals not be able to map my family's movements. I would rather that criminals not be able to map my family's movements and see when our house is empty. And I would certainly rather those who wish to harm or exploit children not know where to find those children. From a cybersecurity standpoint, these systems are a disaster waiting to happen. Flock cameras centralized massive amounts of data in the cloud, creating prime targets for hackers. Documented vulnerabilities show how device flaws and remote access weaknesses can compromise wider municipal systems. There have been reports of outside agencies accessing local data without local oversight. Once data enters a larger network, local control erodes and the city is left holding the bag. Abuse isn't hypothetical, and Kansas an officer used Flock to stalk his ex-wife over two hundred times. At inflated crime solving claims and human rights concerns, the public trust goes away pretty damn fast. Beyond cybersecurity, there's serious Fourth Amendment questions as well. A federal lawsuit in Norfolk, Virginia argues that warrantless vehicle tracking via Flock violates protections against unreasonable searches. The court has allowed that case to proceed, an acknowledgement that core civil liberties may be at stake. Adopting Flock exposes Warrensburg to liability we can't afford. Breaches and misuse mean lawsuits, even with grants. Fixes and litigation siphon dollars from other essentials. There's a better path. Redirect these funds to upgrade dash cameras and body worn cameras, tools that protect both officers and citizens.
Thank you, Heath.
Provide clear evidence and deliver accountability. Please recognize that these cameras pose a serious and unnecessary risk to our community.
Michael Compton. Come up, state your name, address, please, and you have three minutes. Thanks, Michael.
My name is Michael Compton. I live at five thirty, five southeast two hundred and thirtieth road, Warrensburg. Uh, council members, you swore an oath to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri. What's before you deny is not a set of, just a set of cameras. It's a reoccurring subscription to a twenty-four seven license plate tracking grid that lets the government and a private company reconstruct our memory movements without suspicion. Uh, the police may argue that this is based on crime, but the reality is that every, that for every crime, quote, solved, this system gathers data on thousands of innocent citizens. This data isn't just local, it's fed to a private company, Flock, and can be shared across the vast network of other agencies, all without our knowledge or consent. This runs directly counter to our state's values. You'll likely hear tonight, or you probably already heard, that they're just taking pictures of license plates, but that argument misses the point. The constitutional problem isn't one photo. The problem is the system, a twenty-four by seven surveillance grid that automatically builds a searchable electronic file on every citizen's movements. The resulting database is the electronic data that Article One, Section fifteen of the Missouri Constitution was written to protect. It's an amendment that makes our state constitution actually stronger on that point than the US Constitution. A dense ALPR network with a thirty day look back creates what the Supreme Court calls near perfect surveillance of our daily lives. This pattern of life file is precisely what our state constitution protects from warrantless collection. This combination, mass surveillance, private data sharing, and the fact that Missouri treats these records as closed investigative files is a constitutional problem and a civic problem. The public gets no sunlight, no auditing, just surveillance. If you pass this, you won't just be buying cameras, you'll be diverting public funds into a system that invites and will likely receive immediate costly and divisive legal challenges. Federal courts already allow program wide challenges to these policies, and there are many citizens, I think many in this room tonight, who will not see their rights violated without a fight. Therefore, I urge you to vote no. This mass location tracking is incompatible with the Fourth Amendment and our own Article One, Section fifteen. Uphold your oath, protect our liberties, and do not authorize this program. Thank you.
Uh, Bill Wayne, come forward, name and address, please.
My name, my name is William Truman Wayne. I live at four three one Southeast Y Highway, Warrensburg. While I don't reside inside the city limits, I've owned real property within the city for over fifty years and travel within the city regularly. I've paid a lot in sales tax over the years. Today I drove by at least seven cameras. Not counting whatever they are at the corners of D D and Bridgeview, Young at Berthcar, Maguire and Young, and Maguire and Cooper. They were neither identified nor included on the list of proposed locations. I'd sure like to know who owns these. Councilperson Latari has asked some pertinent questions, some of which have been adequately answered. I want to reemphasize that the council should, should it consider this surveillance program needs to make certain that adequate protocols are in place to protect the privacy of those who frequent its street, notwithstanding the opinion of the chief of police that we have no right to privacy. I think we can expect that federal agencies will, will create a database that follows us everywhere we go. They have regularly lied, ignored their own rules and laws to do whatever they want to the detriment of individual human rights. The Tuskegee experiments, the Japanese internment camps, HUAC, Watergate, Tonkin Gulf, WMD's Russian Gate, et cetera. They've pressured cell phone makers to backdoor to encryption while deleting their own messages. Why should we think Flock will be allowed to keep their promise of secrecy? Why should we believe that any records created will not be added to a national track, tracking database such as Palantir? Are we to accept that every time we drive through town, we are subject to surveillance by Big Brother? Have you ever heard of the Institute for Justice? It's a nonprofit which files lawsuits to protect individual rights as guaranteed under the Constitution. This sort of surveillance is already in litigation in various places, and many towns are backing away from flocking their citizens. I urge the city council to protect our privacy, not to mention saving fifty thousand dollars, and deny this request. And to require those, these, those unidentified cameras, if that's what they are, already installed on public infrastructure, be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thomas Holbrook.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Holbrook. I live at seven eleven Cedar Drive Apartment A here in Warrensburg. I have lived in this city for many years, and I am the one that sent some of those questions. The ones that came before me spoke better on this topic than I ever could. So I'm just gonna speak from the heart on this. I find it interesting that the answer to whether this information is provided to any third parties only included commercial entities. No mention was made of surrounding cities, states, counties, or the federal government. That's a little concerning to me. I remember when nine eleven happened and how people kept saying, if only we could do this one thing, pass this law, make it more convenient to catch the bad guys. But that convenience comes at a cost. And this, even though it's coming from a grant, the lawsuits could be more expensive than this grant. Uh, speaking on one of the comments earlier, look up AWS government data breaches. You'll find several stories where even military data leaked. Even as soon as twenty twenty-five, and I'm talking worldwide. Flock does not have their own private servers. They rely on a third party to store that information. In this case, it's Amazon. And they're not immune from cyber attacks themselves. Once this data goes outside the community, game over, we've lost all control over it. I would rather time, energy and resources be put into other causes like one that was shown earlier tonight. I feel that that would be a little bit more productive than treating every resident, visitor, business owner of Warrensburg as a suspect. This is not Minority Report. We do not need to set up a police state here, and mark my words. Even with any stated protocols, if there is a potential for abuse, it's not if, but when it will happen. Thank you very much for your time, and please choose a different direction.
Sarah Wiley. Step forward, name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Sarah Wiley from Windsor, Missouri. I've been working here in Warrensburg for many, many years, so I am a frequent um shopper here in Warrensburg. So that's where I'm going to speak from that point of view. You've already heard here how Flock cameras are um leading us towards a surve- surveillance state, kind of reminds me of China. Um, so when I'm thinking about where I go to uh buy my groceries for six kids, I'm not likely to choose Warrensburg anymore. You see, I don't want to be surveilled constantly. This is not the kind of community that I want to be in. As a city council, you guys really should be protecting your businesses. And if people like me don't want to come to shop in Warrensburg anymore, you're gonna lose out on a lot of money there. Um, so, well, that brings me to Benjamin Franklin. He said it best. Those who give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty or safety. So Warrensburg, it looks like this is your future. With Flock cameras, you'll have neither liberty nor safety. Uh, that makes me very sad for Warrensburg. I really hope you guys choose a better path. Thank you.
Adam. I'll let you introduce yourself.
How you doing? I'm Adam Abrexey, six ten Canterbury Drive Apartment C. I'm a single father. I'm thirty-four years old and uh my kid's at home alone. He's nine. He's, he's fine, but left him home so I could come to this meeting. This is the first city council meeting I've ever been to. Clearly, you guys have heard the uh classic libertarian talking points. Uh, council's well aware and they don't care. Uh, we'll just talk about some other things, including uh, an early investor in Flock Security was uh Palantir and uh Peter Thiel. When it was just a AI startup in a garage, uh, Peter Thiel donated millions to the company. So uh, all the concerns about a uh backdoor into Flock's systems are real. Backdoors for the FBI, the CIA. For those of you that say, uh, if you have nothing to hide, you shouldn't care. Well, let me see your phone. Hand your phone and unlock it and let me see it. We'll just go through some uh, well, first two, I will say, is Warrensburg such an unsafe city that we need this? Is, is crime so rampant that we need to spend, as I understand, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant that we get from the state of Missouri. We can spend it however we want. Couldn't we buy some uh, some, some live fire drills for the boys in blue? I mean, how many full autos does the department have? I mean, if we had a real threat here in the city, do, do we have enough firepower to combat that if there was a bank robbery? What about a Barrett fifty cal? I mean, uh, an AA twelve. I'm sure there's all kinds of cool firearms they could buy that they would love to have, they would love to shoot. We'll just read some uh, some headlines here. Denver woman had to prove her innocence after incomplete detectives relied on Flock cameras to pin a twenty-five dollar package theft on her. San Francisco woman pulled out of her car at gunpoint because of license plate reader error. Police officer used Flock Safety to stalk estranged wife in catchy Kansas. I believe that was already brought up. Texas police use Flock uh ALPRs to track a woman who had an abortion across state lines. And these cameras, I don't know how familiar you are, how familiar you guys are with AI. I've, I've run AI on my own computer. These are not just license plate reading cameras. They are AI prompt cameras. That's why you can track a U-Haul trailer pulled by a green suburban. All it takes is somebody changing out that prompt. They can search for people, they can search for whatever they want. It's not just license plates that you're reading. And I would hope that the uh turnout here, I'd imagine this is a little bit bigger than you guys normally get. Um, I'm the one that started, I, I put a Facebook post up on the Berg page. It got several comments, all overwhelmingly against this resolution. So I, I would hope you guys would take that into account uh when your uh decision to vote on this. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. Trista.
Tristan.
Tristan.
Sorry. Sorry.
Introduce yourself, your address, please.
I'm Tristan Satterly. I live at three oh six Jefferson Street Apartment F four. Uh, good evening. I'd like to thank the city council for taking public comments on this issue, as well as my uh fellow Warrensburgites who have gathered here to attend uh tonight to learn comment. Um, in the interest of time, I will only briefly mention that these programs specifically have been shown to only assist officers in point three percent of cases. Uh, there's a small return on investment of community distrust and general resentment. There's plenty of data to also support these cameras specifically wall in use in Chicago, only diverted vehicle crimes to different parts of the city rather than deterred in general. True deterrents and proactive policing are served not by larger, large contracts for millionaires and cameras on every corner, but by community investment and development. Continued investment in the worst areas, areas of our community through local leaders and equity practices are the key to a downtick in crime here in Warrensburg. No amount of cameras will fill a person's checkbook, and so therefore no amount of punishment will stop a crime. I think something should be done to improve the current crime rate in Warrensburg and assist officers to raise their current clearance rate, especially with move vehicle theft. Uh, I think, believe it was forty-two vehicle thefts and three clearance. Uh, I asked his council to repurpose this grant money to further that initiative rather than to surveil uh the citizens. I appreciate you guys' time, David.
Thank you. Erica Costa, please.
My name's Erica Costa. I live at ten thirty-eight Anderson uh here in Warrensburg. I feel I'm a little late to the party because I just saw that gentleman's Facebook post today, and he's right, there are a ton of people asking why we need this and can the money be spent uh better in other places. So me showing up here tonight was actually just trying to find out what was going on, why there's a need for these in the first place. I've been here, I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty-six, and I do not feel this is a unsafe city at all. Um, we have, yes, we have had some pretty serious crimes over the decades that I've been here, but to my knowledge, they've all been solved without tracking cars. To that gentleman's point, uh, they are ripe for abuse. I do know the Munstermans, both sheriff and chief, I've known them for years. They are great people. I have no doubt they would not do anything themselves to use this in an improper manner, but there are tons of people below them uh that are employed that can, you know, slip through the cracks as well as the system being hacked. So I'm just trying to figure out why we have a question, or why there is a feeling that we need these in the first place. And maybe you guys have presented that information prior to here, because it's based on what you were reading. You've had two or three or four uh meetings with this being brought up. So if that information is out there on why we need these, I would love to know where that's at so I can read that information. Because like I said, this is a safe town. I'm gonna spill some beans that is gonna have to change my behavior now, but generally I don't even lock my doors. So if you came to my house, you could walk right in, but I'm gonna have to change that behavior now, but this is a safe town. I don't think we need these. Uh, the money could be spent uh in other places. Matter of fact, if you come to my house, you'll notice that my house and the house across the street, we don't even have curbs yet. My neighborhood has gone through three or four rounds of replacing curbs and redoing the streets. And I called down and I'm like, hey, you guys are replacing curbs with new curbs. I don't even have curbs. What's going on? Well, we don't have the budget. Well, there's fifty thousand. Maybe you could give me some curbs.
Any other comments?
Public comments.
Okay, we'll close. Would you step forward, please? I know who you are, but. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Barb Rhodes, ten oh five Plaza Place. Actually, I was on the website today looking for minutes. Because I was looking for that information too. I'm assuming there was a presentation. By Mr. Munsterman as to why we need this, but I could find, I could find an agenda, but I could find no minutes. Is that information available to us?
So.
Yeah, he was not in the last minutes, absolutely.
Where are they? I, I find the agenda on there.
So the minutes, of course, get approved at the next meeting.
So there are no minutes available to us.
So they are, they are now.
Now.
Available and they were available as of, I think, Thursday afternoon.
Well, it was on the website today.
If you go.
I must not know.
Today's packet because they're an action item for approval today. So if you were looking at the meeting prior.
I'm sure it's me.
No, it's confusing. So just so everyone else knows, just like really any other committee or board, the, the minutes from the last meeting are approved. At that, at the meeting, like we are here today. So now they're official and now they will be posted in their own little meetings column. And, you know, notes columns, but beforehand, before they're officially approved by us, they, they're linked in the agenda. So every meeting agenda is going to have the minutes from the last meeting that we will then approve at this meeting. So they're always there, always by Friday and sometimes by Thursday before the meeting. That's where they are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Barb.
Great question. Because it can be confusing, I know.
Are there any other public comments?
One, one more headline. I gotta, I gotta go. Okay, my kid's acting, but. Security researcher found flock logins for sale on Russian forums, hacking forums. That was November twenty twenty-five. So it's on a website called Dblock dot.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments? Public comments? No. Thank you very much. We'll close the comments. Item seven point two. Public comments on ordinance amending chapter twenty, article four, division three of the code of city ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Regarding erosion and sediment control regulations.
And may I, I don't know the correct way to interrupt. I apologize. I think it's not point of order, but it's something else. I just want to make it clear that we're having a second public hearing on a different topic. And then the council will vote on this, the flock thing. So. Hold your horses. We're getting there. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we weren't just going on to something else. Thank you.
Are there any comments for the erosion and sediment control regulations? Nope. Okay, we will close those public comments. Item eight, eight point one, second reading of an ordinance authorizing a city manager to enter into an agreement with flock safety. For the installation and use of license plate recognition cameras for public safety purposes presented by Chief Munsterman, Police Chief.
Mayor, if I may, I might kick things off. First of all, I wanted to thank you and acknowledge your review of kind of all the deliberations that got us here. And you, you kind of made the point, so I'm repeating it, but you, staff provided a staff report previously. And part of that conversation was whether you wanted to take action that same night or whether you wanted to postpone, schedule public hearing. So I think that combined with the information that staff gathered and provided. We've tried to do our due diligence to provide you a, a full objective overview of the tool, this tool, the technology that's available. It is in widespread use. It's something in law enforcement. It's used pretty frequently across the nation. But tried to give you the other side of that in terms of that compilation of articles, try to be responsive to the questions. I almost feel like I owe you an apology because now we're handing this to you to deliberate on. It is very much a discretionary decision for you in terms of whether that's something that you think we want to do here in the community. Staff is prepared to review the staff report we gave previously, prepared to review any questions or concerns you might have. My suggestion would be that you try to group those questions. I, I took notes in the public comment. There really were, the, the one question that came out of that was why we feel like we need the technology. We can certainly answer that question. And then rather than it turn into a back and forth dialogue amongst you and, and Chief Munsterman. And we do have a flock representative that's available to answer technical questions you might have for them. My encouragement would be to deliberate as you see fit. Kind of be mindful of any questions that you might have and then staff can try to answer those. I would also say that in talking with Adam Summer, the city attorney, he's prepared if you have legal questions. As it relates to the Fourth Amendment and some of those assertions are concerned. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chief Munsterman, but ultimately we're going to hand it back to you to make this discretionary decision.
Evening, Mayor, Council. This evening, we're presenting the second reading of flock safety. I've prepared a letter and the ordinance for you that is pretty lengthy detail. We've tried to collaborate and bring all information forward, the pros and cons of flock safety. I appreciate the public's input this evening. It did not go unheard. I don't take it lightly because this is a big decision. With that, there's over two hundred cities within the state of Missouri that already have flock. Surrounding counties, current county has flock. And with that being said, criminals will be leaving those cities, coming to our cities and committing crimes. When, when they know that we don't have flock. So it is a tool. We have used, we have used it recently. We had a felony hit and run with a car last week. Where we were notified about it. One of our investigators, actually the major was able to get in to the flock system and check some vehicles. We've been looking at other videos citywide, the police department videos for about an hour and a half. I think within ten minutes, he was able to figure out the vehicle that was involved in that crash. And that vehicle ended up coming back by and was sprayed paint in black on the flock system. So they then collaborated, got information together, got a photo lineup. With the individual who was in that vehicle and now we're looking to charge the individual on a felony crime. So it is a useful tool. We've had homicides in the past downtown. We had one approximately four years ago with a vehicle that drove by. We had a white vehicle that was involved in it. We had no other camera footage, nothing but cell phones that were provided to us. If we had this tool available to us, it could have been an asset. That, that homicide's still unsolved. So we do have those type of crimes that are unsolved that have occurred here. We had a homicide over off of, it was down by Jerry's One Stop. The individual ended up running to Jerry's One Stop and fellow were dead there. And that homicide still is not solved. We, we have, we actually have it solved, but we have another individual that we know was involved in it. That if we had these systems available to us, then we might have been able to, to put that individual in jail or prison. Where he's still out and about. Actually, we got him picked up in Kansas City on other crimes, working with Kansas City who have these type of systems. And we were able to work with them and collaborate. So it is a useful tool amongst other law enforcement agencies and that is why we're bringing it forward. There's a lot of pros. There's a lot of cons regarding to it. So that's what I have for you. Here for any questions if you wish. Everybody's questions that came forward to the best of our.
Have a question for our city attorney. Liability situation for the city in this use.
Highly unlikely that there would be a liability issue. Liability would have to come with some level of damage, some level of incursion that caused the person to have. A reason to have liability. Privacy concerns typically don't go into the liability area. So if there were to be some type of challenge on that, it would be based. The only real legal challenges to these are going to be privacy issues, which we've heard a lot about tonight already. But in terms of actual liability, that term would require a damage of some kind. And so I don't, I don't foresee any actual liability and I've been following all of the cases that we heard about tonight with great interest. Because this is an interesting thing from a legal standpoint, if nothing else. And nothing, none, nothing so far has had anything to do with liability and I don't foresee that being an issue.
I. Okay, I didn't realize that the courts have ruled. The flock information be public information.
I have not seen that. If, if I may.
Yes, you.
I'm sorry.
That's why I'm, these are kind of a, I may, it may sound like a statement, but I'm asking a question.
Okay. One court, a lower court in the state of Washington ruled that in that particular jurisdiction. That, that it would be considered as a public record. One court. That is it.
Okay.
Not a federal court, not a state Supreme Court, not a US District Court, nothing along those lines, certainly not the Supreme Court. The, the closest thing to a real ruling at this point is the case out of Norfolk, Virginia. That one I've been following with great interest. It was back in the spring of twenty twenty-five that the judge. So what happened in that case was there was, a case was filed against the city. And then a motion to dismiss was filed. And the judge ruled against the motion to dismiss and said the case may continue forward. Reasoning behind that was because that case includes, that judge said it includes questions that are similar to Carpenter versus United States. Carpenter versus United States is a two thousand eleven case that was about cellphone data and the way that it was accessed. And it's a privacy case. So the judge said, because the questions have some similarity to that two thousand eleven case, I will allow the case to proceed. So there has been that ruling in Washington. There has been that motion ruling in the Norfolk case. There's really not a final answer here from what the courts will or won't do with these. I think it's probably going to be three or four years before we have that answer. We need that answer, but we really don't, we just don't have it yet.
Okay, so there's litigation in process and so. Like you just said, I'm, I'm assuming that it's going to take two or three years for the litigation to go through the courts, maybe longer. The is, one of the issues that I have is, is it true that flock uses third-party servers? I didn't, I've never heard that before, but.
According to their.
I would feel more comfortable with flock if, if we had the cameras. And the data was coming into your server. And only your server had access for the thirty days and on a rolling schedule. After thirty days. The old stuff would just disappear off of your server. And the only time that flock would be involved, the home location, regardless of where it is. If it's on third-party servers or in their back. Back room. The only time it's in their possession is if you send them the one license number. Plate number or card description that you need to look for because it's attached to a crime. I don't like the idea that our information would be someplace else. That could be misused by another city, another county, a state. Federal, whatever, that somebody else could get to it and it would be kept in that location. I don't know what an AWS data breach is. What's that?
The Amazon Web Services data breach a couple of weeks ago, there was an issue with Amazon Web Services.
Oh, okay.
And I believe that is the server they use, correct? Amazon Web Services.
Is that the service that they use?
That's what I've read in their, in their documentation.
One at a time.
That's the information we have.
Is it that the Amazon Web Service data breach is where the flock information is kept? Is that what you're saying?
That's the information I have. We'd have to clarify with flock.
Okay. So that's my biggest, that's my biggest concern is what I just said. My second big concern is that this is a fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand dollar grant. Well, there's more than one thing about it. We can't cancel it. There's nothing in the contract that says that we have the right to cancel it within thirty, in thirty to sixty days. If, if we decide we don't like it, we have, we could only cancel it at the end of the. One-year contract by giving thirty days notice. So if we do it, we're stuck with it for a year. The other thing is that it's fifty thousand dollars and if somebody sues us. We will spend a hundred times that amount. Representing ourselves against that lawsuit and the only people that come out ahead are the attorneys. I'm sorry, Adam.
Very valid.
So those are my concerns and that is why I feel extremely hesitant. To, to approve this.
And I have to say that I'm really torn because I'm certainly protective of civil rights. But I've also had family members that have been murdered. I've had family members that have been sexually attacked and nearly killed. If flock could have helped catch those people quicker.
That's, that is one point I was going to bring up. Until you've looked those family members in the face, whether or not you feel we're in a safe community. I feel we do have a safe community, but until you have to sit down with one of them family members and advise them that their son has passed. And you don't know where to look at this point in time, that you'll keep working on it until I'm not here. That's a hard thing to do, to notify that family of that. And that's a hard thing, you go home at night thinking about that case all the time. And if this tool could help in that way to give us a peace of mind and sleep a little better, that we know we've done everything we can. Fifty thousand dollars isn't very much at all.
And it's my understanding that there are others, other services that that fifty thousand could go for. Is that correct?
There's, I've put that list in there. There's multiple different, multiple different things that we can purchase. License plate readers, we can do computers, radios, which we just purchased radios. And we looked at Speed Trailer. I got some bids on Speed Trailer in case this doesn't go through. That way we have backup.
All right.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm like Eddie. I came in here kind of a fifty fifty. There's lots of pros for it and there's lots of cons for it. Certainly the sentiment in here tonight has been very much against it. And so maybe we're kind of rushing into it a little fast. We want the police department. And we think we're so fortunate to have the police department we have, the police chief we have, the sheriff we have, the law enforcement officers. The way they've handled some situations recently with non-lethal, stopping assailants. We appreciate so much the training and the professionalism of your officers. I'm kind of leaning right now that maybe this is something we postpone. I mean, as far as picking this up, see what else we might be able to do with those funds going forward until some of this. Legal and, and flock kind of gets things under control, but we do appreciate it very much. I know you want the best for Warrensburg and that's why you're here and that's what we want to. And I think the sentiment tonight's been very, very against going this way. It doesn't mean maybe next year that things get, flock gets under control or there's some case law or whatever, Adam. That makes us feel more secure about it, but any other comments here?
That's a renewable grant. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we say we bought one of those other things, the speed trailer or whatever would fit. There's a chance next year we would get that, get another grant?
There's a chance, yes.
Okay.
Should be renewed.
Okay.
And, and I think that the, we as a council have shown considerable support to our police department. With the Axon contract and with the other things that we've provided. And we're, we're doing everything we can to support our police department. And we will continue to do that, but we have to feel, I know I have to feel. Right about it. And I just have these reservations. right about it, and I just have these reservations um, and mistrust, but it's not mistrust of our department, our police department, it's mistrust of the system. And how it's put together, I think Flock is still a developing um, service, and they're still making missteps. And they put policies, procedures in place to fix that, and they know more and fix that, then they'd make another misstep. And it's, it just, it doesn't seem like they have their total act together to be nationwide just yet everywhere.
I do have one other question, if I may, is there a timeframe when we need to apply, are we being given the grant? Is there a timeframe on when we have to spend the monies?
No, um, I reached out to them to see if we didn't do this, if we were able to spend it on other things, and they said yes, so I think we just have to get back to them as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there is a question too about cameras, we know there's fourteen um, licensed plate readers already in Warrensburg. That's not ours.
They're not ours.
Yes, uh, that's a good question, so there's two in Cahill, I believe in City Right Away. Um, and then I believe there's nine at UCM, six or nine at UCM in City Right Away. And then two at Lowe's, so.
I just wanted people to know that, that they're here.
With the, in the addition, again, this is a, a with the addition of those, uh, was it nine eleven, fourteen cameras that are available, how many is the county installing now?
Johnson County?
Yeah, Sheriff's Office.
I believe around sixteen in your county, so where other people live.
What if any other communities in Warrensburg, or in Warrensburg?
Uh, Gloucester, Holden, and then Sedalia already has them, Clinton has them. Um, over two hundred cities within the state, sir. I do appreciate all the support you have given for the police department over the last year. It, it has greatly shown, okay, that definitely has greatly shown. We just brought this forward for you guys to make a collective decision. I, I am interested in what occurs after all these other cameras do get installed. So, and have what our crime rate does do, so.
So, Chief. Sorry, so all of those other communities specifically have flock cameras that you just mentioned?
Johnson County just approved them, Henry County is uh, getting them approved, Clinton just approved them as we started talking about them. Sedalia approved them last year, um, approximately over two hundred other cities. Uh, they emailed me today, Flock did it as about two hundred and ten. And Flock's been around a long time, it's uh, actually been, I believe since two thousand seventeen, so they have been nationwide for quite a long time. So I don't, I think you have a lot of things being asked of Flock. Um, a lot of litigation going on with Flock here as of late. But I think that's some of the times we're living in and people are asking questions, and rightfully so, the, uh, people here have the good questions to be asked, I understand that, so.
Uh, this is purely speculation on my part, but I think the, the, the blue ribbon grant that we receive, these other communities are receiving, and they're gravitating to.
The state of Missouri has approved the use of flock safety. So the state of Missouri, and they have a law requiring that law enforcement must use it appropriately, or they will be charged. If we misuse flock, we will be charged with a crime. We have mules access, that's how we get your information from the vehicle, the vehicle is property, the, your property, but the license plate is the state of Missouri. So that's how we get the information is through mules, which is a state system, so.
And I want to state again, I know that um, so much appreciation, Chief, for the work you do, and I want to make it clear, I've said it before, and I want to make sure I say it again, that my concern has never been about you or your officers. Um, others may feel differently about that in the community, but my, you know, I've gotten to work with you, volunteer with you, I know you to be a person of integrity, and I know that that is the standard that you hold for your officers. And I have zero concern about what the Warrensburg Police Department will do, just like Councilmember Jones said. Again, my deepest concern is that other states and the federal government um, could have access. Um, I understand from reading all of these documents multiple times, that flock has to, that other agencies have to be given permission, however, again, I have concerns about backdoors and a lack of safety and the fact that the data is being stored on an Amazon web server. Um.
Um, may I, may I ask, where's your uh, cellphone data stored at?
That's a little different.
It's, it's, yeah, well, um, I don't know where it's, it's stored, but um, I'm not concerned about, like, my, my concern is not for me personally. I've got a whole lot of privilege, I'm not somebody who's undocumented, I'm not seeking an abortion in a state that, you know, doesn't allow me to have my own body autonomy. Um, I'm concerned about those folks, I'm not concerned about me. Um, so I, my hesitancy has never been about what you and your police department will do, but the fact that it is a nationwide service, and I, I would agree that there are uh, some bugs that, you know, they've acknowledged here multiple times. Things they've had to go back and fix, the fact that they didn't know that a, an agency in Illinois was working with a federal agency. The flock leadership didn't know that this was going on, I mean, to me, that's a huge red flag. Um, I also know, Chief, that if we had these cameras, you would be able to better solve crimes, I know that. It's been clear that they have been used appropriately for what they are intended to do, to help find people who are stealing, to find people who are domestic abusers, to find murderers, it's happened, and I know that would happen. I just am also not ready to turn all of our data over to this company. Thank you.
We had a question too about the other cameras, Phil, maybe you can explain.
Oh, yeah.
Those are better than anybody, I would imagine.
Alright, so we do have cameras on our signal pole lights. Uh, those are used so that we, when the vehicles come to the right spot, they want to take a left-hand turn, right-hand turn, whatever. That's what signifies or signals the computer inside the uh, stoplight controls, and it tells it, okay, there's a vehicle there, you need to move the process along, turn the green light on and get going. So that's what some of those cameras are for. We also have some temperature or snow weather cameras that actually point down at the asphalt and take the temperature of the asphalt, so that we have the ability, look at that. It'll tell us the temperature of the asphalt, tell us the temperature of the air outside, you can actually see, you know, ice on the roads, gives us the ability to come out and start the process to get the roads cleared.
And just so we're clear, just so everyone knows, this is Phil Adlet, he's the interim director of Public Works, so that's his job to know all of these details.
I guess MoDOT has some too.
Uh, so, MoDOT does have some on some of their, not in Warrensburg, but in other areas.
And those cameras though, Phil, the, the signal, the cameras that are on the signal.
Yes.
Aren't license plate readers, they're not capturing data, they're not facial recognition.
No.
They're noticing that a, a vehicle has come up, they're not recording anything.
They don't record, don't send data to a server anywhere.
And the, some of our new streetlights will have uh, the ability for our fire department and emergency vehicles.
We're hoping to get that in the future, we do not have that right now.
I know, but I thought with the new stuff that was coming in, that we were going to have that uh, ability with the new lights that are coming in.
No, so the.
We're gonna get new lights?
Lights, stoplights, we are getting new signal heads, we're getting new mast arms, we're getting new poles. We are not getting the new.
Preemption.
Preemption, thank you, we do not have the preemption data portion yet. That's been discussed, and it's been talked about, and we've probably presented some numbers, but it is a little higher than what was approved, so.
Uh, and, and it would be broader than just the McGuire segment that's being worked on.
We would want that Long Young, we'd want on McGuire, we'd want it on Ridge U, so.
Okay.
That's why it hasn't been approved yet, it's gonna be a larger amount.
Well, for the public to know, that's so that lights and siren from a police or a fire, then it overrides that.
It gives them a green light.
Feeds up your signal process, so that it knows it's coming, it's going to go through the yellows, you know, it's gonna make things hit.
Stop the traffic so that the vehicles can get through, okay, so we're gonna have to wait to have that technology
Yes.
At a later time, okay. Alright, and so the little uh, camera that's up there is recognizing a vehicle is in a lane, and so it's gonna change the light, it's not a thing on, on the ground, I thought it was something you had.
It used to be, but technology has come up, it used to be wired in the ground, then it was a radar. Now it's more of a camera.
Okay.
And through the process of computers, A, AI, it marks out this lane, the drive straight line, lane, the turn lane, and then the exit lane. And it will actually tell when something is in there, it can even do pedestrians, bicycles, so.
Yeah, which is a great safety concern.
Getting smarter as well.
Folks who are using wheelchairs or other mobility devices to have, like, sure they're recognized and.
That's what those cameras for, they're not recording anything.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I got one more question, I, I questioned Andy, or Chief, I'm sorry, I've called him Andy for decades. Um, with the other thirty or forty cameras that are going up and up in Johnson County already, will you have access at least to the data of what successes they have performed? Depending on what we say here tonight or not, would the sheriff and the other police chiefs be able to tell you, hey, Flock helped us in this and this and this and this and this?
Yeah, we should be able to get that data, um, I'm sure they'd share it with us, I don't, as of right now, UCM has shared their system with us, I believe, Major Fiddler, uh, he's still in here, so they, they've shared their system with us, so we do have access to that as of now. And Flock has given us, I think, temporary access because we're looking at doing this. So I don't know when that will shut off, but we can get data from the other surrounding agents.
What, what I'm looking at is to have the actual local data to see, so we can say if this isn't decided upon tonight, it's no deny, if it is. Um, can you talk to these other agencies that are in our county to prove next time when you come up and say thirty-seven crimes have been solved and da-da-da-da-da?
That is correct. I can give that information.
So, uh, to build on that a little bit, I don't think this is where your question was headed, but hypothetically, if we have a, if we're looking for a vehicle, we, and we don't have flock ac- access, we could contact the county and ask them to?
I'm sure they will work with us and uh, and, and be watching and working with us in that aspect for that. It's a matter of uh, dealing with the other agency and uh, getting them, if they're available to assist us at that time, so.
And there's probably a question for you and the attorney both, would that fall underneath mutual aid? Could you request mutual aid specifically for that?
You got an MOU with the state, right?
Yeah, with the uh, we got a MOU signed with the state for this.
Right.
So, yeah, we, we would have MOUs or mutual aid depending on that, what fit best with all surrounding, there would be outlines on how the data is used, when it's able to be used. Right, in writing and accessible to the public.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
One other quick thing, I just wanted to say, um, another, um, some folks here and online and other places, folks who've emailed us um, have said, why can't you spend on other things like a staff person, and so just want to clear that up, that again, it's a fifty thousand dollar one-time grant that may or may not be renewable, and so it's not, it would not be ethical to try to hire somebody, fill a position with a grant position that we don't know is gonna be renewed, and fifty thousand might, might pay for a half-time person of some kind, but um, it would definitely not fill because of all the, you know, benefit health insurance and that kind of thing, it wouldn't pay for a full-time staff person.
I believe it specifically lines out equipment, if I remember correctly, specifically for, the Blue Shield grants fifty thousand specifically for equipment.
Right.
For law, for law, for force, law enforcement purposes.
For sure, and so I just wanted to clear that up, that that's why we can't just say, oh, well, we'll hire another officer, we'll do something else.
Could we purchase additional uh, beanbag guns? I think I, I was just so impressed with how the Warrensburg Police Department handled that situation downtown with the crazy person, you know, and the knife and.
We just purchased three today, or was in the process of purchasing three shotguns today, um, and I don't believe it specifically outlines weapons, so, I don't believe.
That's a real, that's a real weapon?
Yeah.
It would hurt.
Big backgrounds or not, but it's, the shotgun shoots the rounds.
It's a real shotgun?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we color-coded it, so it's a different color, it's like lime green, and the ones we're ordering, I believe, are orange, is that correct? Yes, or that way they stand out, you know, they're.
That way, you know, there's a situation going on, it was my understanding that it was the supervisor that had the beanbag gun.
They're all trained in it.
But that's who has it, so if the supervisor wasn't at the uh, where the incident was happening, they had to call the supervisor to come in with a gun.
We're trying to get them in every vehicle.
That's, okay, that's where I'm, that's what I'd like to see.
We're moving towards, so.
That's good, okay, thank you, Andy.
Non-lethal options, yeah.
Thanks, Chief, anything else? I just hope that, no matter what happens tonight, if we can access the uh, successes of the systems in the other portions of the county, as time goes on, that we can make people feel better about what the system will do and how it will help, you know. I think it will help, you can also go to O'Reilly's and put your license number in, and it'll tell you what your car is and how to fix it. Um, as far as data breaches go, there's one a day.
I just, it's, it happens, I mean, I, I can't say it's not.
I know, and.
It happens, and uh, I understand, I understand everybody's uh, it's a touchy subject, I, I totally understand, and I understand all points of view, and uh, we're just bringing it forward. So for you to make the decision, yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council? Nope, we haven't. Orange is in front of us.
What do we have to do?
So it's a second?
Second reading.
Oh, do we have to move to second reading?
Yep.
This, no, no.
Just have to.
Wave this for adoption or rejection?
Adoption or rejection, unless there are other motions to be made, at this point, you're in adoption or rejection.
Can there be a motion made to uh, 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 put this in abeyance?
Uh, that would be a motion to table.
A motion to table?
That could be made.
Okay.
Okay, and we, we, we wouldn't have to say uh, exactly when we wanted to table it to?
You do not have to pick a date, you can move to table it. You don't have to, you don't have to pick a date to have the next vote on it, if you table it, it will naturally table to the next meeting. So at the next meeting, it will come up again as a table item, and then if you're ready to take it up, you can, if not, you would move to table it further.
So you'd have to table it every month?
Correct, you have to continue taking action on it until you're ready to finalize it.
I make the motion, we table it.
Does that need a second? Resolutions don't need seconds.
No, it's not a resolution.
It's a motion, it does, it will require a second, yeah, and because it's a motion in in ordinance vote, you should do a real call vote.
Okay, I'll second Eddie's motion.
Table, if I may, has tabled to a date certain or table indefinitely?
Table to the next meeting, well, that's what we were just discussing.
Right, can we pick a date so that it doesn't show up every single meeting?
If you're ready to pick a date.
Can we, when is the next, um, Andy, when is the next application process? So a year from now?
Blue Shield Grant?
Yes.
Um, it'll be next year, I'm hoping we just have, they'll open it up, we'll just reapply, it surrounds September time.
Okay, so would be.
It opened, it's weird because we were just receiving the award, but we put in for it, um, I believe it was last February or right when uh, uh, the city made it look good, good in here.
Okay, because it's brand new, right? Yeah.
So.
So if we were to.
To clarify, has any, has Councilperson Osborne made a motion? And if so, do you have? And if so, do you have, we're making a motion to table, you're making a motion to table for further consideration, for public input, for?
For further consideration till next year. Quite frankly, because I would like to see that information that Jim had mentioned, we get that information.
Could we just vote on this and then readdress this at a later time next year or something?
So right now, that's, sorry, because there's a motion that's been made, but if there's not a second, the motion would die, and then we can go back to discussion, so.
I'll take my second back so we can get uh more specific. So like, so now it's gonna die.
So that question is, yeah, so that motion is not seconded, so it's it's dead. Um, so in terms of what you could do at this point, yes, you could vote it, you could vote it up, you could vote it down. Um, if you voted down, obviously, that would just restart the process uh from that standpoint, so. All all, the only real complication there is restarting the process, and then, of course, there is that shield grant money that would need to be spent, I'm guessing they're. Find ways to spend it, but at the same time.
You'll have to come back.
Yeah, a new thing to do with that money.
Right. So if it's helpful, uh you could vote it down, you can just in general give staff direction that you'd like to revisit this. When the time is right in the next grant cycle, and I'll leave it at that, or you could be more specific with the date certain. The difficulty with date certain is we may pick the wrong date, until we know more about the grant cycle.
The grant cycles.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, so what, what do we?
We're still debating at this point, nobody actually called the questions.
Yeah.
So can we make a motion? What he said?
If you want to do what I described, I think you're just uh you're declining to pass it, and then staff will. Take from your conversation and directive that when the timing is right, you want to revisit that next year.
So that that would just be call, it gets questioned and.
Yeah, I called to question for about, okay.
Thank you. One show.
And that means a second?
Nope, cause it's already, nope.
Okay. So this is for adoption or rejection, Kushner?
No.
Osborne?
No.
Latari?
No.
Jones?
No.
Euler?
No.
Question fail.
Item eight point two. An ordinance amending chapter twenty, article four, division three of the Code of City Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding. Erosion and sediment control regulations presented by Barbara Carroll, Director of Community Development, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, you held a first reading on this ordinance as well at your October thirteenth meeting. Uh, since that time, staff has not received any additional, any public comment, uh, one way or the other on it. Um, we did include the amendment that you made at that last meeting uh in. The, um, and so it's been included in the ordinance for your consideration this evening, it's on page seven. If you want to look at that on page seven of the clean version, and so um it's in green. Uh, that was added to section twenty dash one oh two point one F as a new section six. The any and all trees will be in compliance with the Missouri Department of Conservation Native Species Tree List. So um I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them this evening.
Any questions?
No, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Barbara.
Um, this ordinance.
No question.
Not a, no question, but just a comment that um Chuck Connor, who's the community forester for this county among others, would be a great resource for that list. Just, uh, cause the the tree board put that together years ago with his help, and I'm certain it needs updating, um, so.
Well, that list that the tree board put together wouldn't be this list.
You're right, I apologize, we put together.
There is information on M D C's webpage, though.
Yes.
Uh, that would direct people to appropriate native tree species.
Great, thank you.
We can still share the other list with them, if their interest.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
No questions.
No. Motion moved to second reading by title only.
Oh, that is second reading. For adoption or rejection?
Okay. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight point three, an ordinance accepting dedication of a utility easement. For water services alo- located along the south right-of-way line of Hamilton Street as a permanent utility easement in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Presented by Phil Adlich, interim Public Works Director.
Evening, Mayor, Council members. Um, this one was tabled October thirteenth, uh, we needed to correct the verbiage in the easement. It has been corrected and now reads correctly. Again, it's the Missouri American Water, putting a line there, south of Hamilton. Staff recommends.
Questions, anyone?
No questions.
Nope.
All for the bow.
It's quiet.
This for adoption or rejection, Kushner?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine point one, an ordinance declaring hardship and suspending certain fees related to municipal sewer. And sewer and solid waste services under section twenty-four dash forty-four of the Code of City Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. Presented by Jessica Benderlow, man- management analyst. Hello, Jessica.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This ordinance would suspend the assessment of late fees for outstanding utility balances for store and solid waste. Um, many in our community have been impacted by the government shutdown and delays in receiving income and other financial benefits. Can affect their ability to meet their daily needs. This recent shutdown has obviously been an ever-evolving situation, we had some recent news um as of yesterday and tonight that there, we're on the brink potentially of a deal to reopen the government. Um, but as of now, it is still closed, and many have not received paychecks or other benefits such as food assistance. Um, under our current code of ordinances, residential customers are allowed to utilize payment plans, payment, payment agreements. When they experience quote extraordinary hardship. So this ordinance declares community-wide um hardship due to the conditions that have been created by the government shutdown. And as I'm sure you all are aware, a neighboring community recently adopted a very similar policy to this in light of everything going on. So under the approach presented tonight, usage information would still be received from the water company, we would still generate our bills, we would still send those out for payment. But our residents would not be penalized for late payments or an inability to pay during the month of November. Um, tonight, staff are not making an official recommendation, but are presenting this policy um for your discussion and decision, but we are happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Thanks for working on this.
I was gonna thank Jessica, she she picked it up at the last minute.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Jessica.
Any questions, discussions?
Move to the previous ordinance, second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance declaring hardship and suspending certain fees related to municipal sewer and solid waste services. Under section twenty-four dash forty-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection, Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine point two, an ordinance approving and adopting the storm drainage. And utility easements for the Evergy substation located at three hundred West Pine Street. In the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, presented by Phil Adlich. More people ask about what's going on at that corner than anything in town.
Well, evening, Mayor, City Council members, Evergy is starting their process to build in. The substation that is currently there is getting upgraded, so they're putting a new substation, and they will be removing. Those substations, they'll probably leave the fenced-in area because they've got some uh sheds and stuff, but. In the process, uh, our sewer main ran underneath where they wanted to put their substation, so they came in and requested that they. They would move our uh sewer main and give us easement across their property, and then also the storm. The storm water easement across their property, so this um is. There, we're accepting the easement for the storm water in the sewer. So that we have the ability to get on there and work on those two things after their project is complete, so. Staff recommends that we approve it. Any questions?
None for me.
Questions? I'm just trying to understand the map, these maps are difficult for me to understand, um. So currently, the the sanitary sewer and storm and storm water.
Hmm.
No, sanitary sewer and what what's running straight through, uh, straight north and south in the middle of the?
I believe that's the same.
Yeah, okay, so it is, yeah, it's going straight north and south, and so it's getting, where does it enter? This property, is it from the south?
It's coming from the south, sorry, I have to give mine.
Yeah, no, that's right.
It goes underneath the railroad tracks, and then on the southern side of their property.
Hmm.
It enters, they're gonna turn it.
They're gonna turn there, okay.
And head to the west.
To the west and then go.
Turn it back.
North again, okay.
And connect to our sewer main there, right on Pine Street.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
That's more on the south side of Pine Street.
And we have confidence.
Water is just, they're gonna move the ditch.
Okay.
And the ditch is just getting rerouted around the property.
And there's, we have confidence that they know how to move sanitary sewer lines that the contractor that they're working with.
Worked with a contractor who's done sewer lines previously.
Great, thank you, thanks for helping me.
Yeah.
Get it straight in my head.
Any questions?
That was it, that's my only question. Alright, thank you.
Move to reading second, ordinance second reading by title only.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance approving and adopting the storm drainage and utility easements for the Evergy substation. Located at three hundred West Pine Streets in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection, Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Phil, ironically, that was where the Warrensburg had their very first power and life company in that same.
Really?
Eighteen nineties or so, late eighteen nineties, I can't.
Maybe.
Yep, yep.
Wow.
So they had the first one?
That was the very first power generation plant, Warrensburg, like in late eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties.
Around then.
Around there, yeah. At that site, that very location there on the street, so. Just a small history story, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ten point one, a resolution of the Council of City of Warrensburg adopting a schedule of fees and setting fees charged by the city, presented by Jessica, again, Management Analyst.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council. As you may remember, last year, you approved our first comprehensive fee schedule, which compiled all of our fees that were scattered amongst different ordinances and resolutions into one place. So the resolution before you tonight simply renews this schedule with a few exceptions. It now includes the fifty-dollar fireworks permit application fee that was previously approved by you all in March after we adopted the fire code at the beginning of the year or near the beginning of the year. Um, it also includes the updated parks and rec fees that go into effect at the beginning of twenty twenty-six. Um, the changes to the fees for parks and rec um were itemized in a different exhibit in your packet. Um, I have nothing else, um, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have, staff recommend that the approval, you approve the resolution as submitted.
I have a question on aquatics. Um.
Sorry, I'm on the soccer.
Okay, on the aquatic center punch passes or season pass, if it says aquatic, does that? And it's up here, it says aquatic center and community center, so they can use their aquatic pass. For either outside or inside pool. It's good for both, they don't need a punch pass for the inside pool and another punch pass for the outside pool, is that correct?
The aquatic passes for, um. I'm gonna do my best on this. The aquatic passes for um the um outdoor pool, and that is massive. Um, the um daily fee is what is used for um for them to use the uh community center pool.
Shouldn't one pass to get in the water work at either location? A pool is a pool, so if the weather is bad and you can't use the outdoor pool and use your punch pass.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
So your kids are all loaded up in the car in their little swimsuits, you bring them in, you can't go to the. Outdoor pool, so now you drive over to the community center, and everybody wants to get in the pool, you need another?
No, 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 if they have, if they have a punch pass, if you're asking about the punch pass, then then that can be used at.
At either pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
Hi, Tris. We have a resolution in front of us.
Um, motion to approve. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten point two, a resolution of the Council of the City of Warrensburg. Repealing resolution number two, three, one, six, and approving the city manager to execute an agreement. With the University of Central Missouri's Division of Art and Design Art Lease Program for the installation of public art in City Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and.
Presented by Marcy Barnhart Tourism Director.
Gone, I got so excited. Kind of like Groundhog's Day. Apologize, but working with city administration, you as council approved resolution twenty-three sixteen, August eleventh. And that approved city manager to enter to an agreement with U C M um. Division of Art and Design, Design Art Lease Program to put public art in City Hall, and it's seven pieces, a hundred dollars. Um, for each piece for a period of twelve months. Well, following your approval, reached out to um Jamie Platt, who is curator of the division, or the U C M Art Gallery. And we learned that the agreement that was provided to the Arts Commission and to legal council and city administration at that time was incorrect. And so it was for the artists themselves and not the facilities, the, and so working with Jamie, we've got the correct lease. Um, it's been reviewed by city administration, it's been reviewed by city um legal. Um, the Arts Commission is well aware, very supportive of this program, would love to see. Public art installed at City Hall, would love for this to be completed before the new year, um, working with Jamie. The Arts Commission is still willing and has still approved the um installation of the seven pieces. Um, and then Jamie Platt, the curator, would come and install the art pieces herself. Um, so we're very excited about that. Tonight, before you, is the resolution to repeal resolution twenty-three sixteen that had the prior agreement. And to approve the new resolution before you to allow the city manager to enter into a new, that is correct agreement. Are there any questions? And Councilmember Jones, I hope if that mom has her car loaded of kids, they stop by City Hall and check out the cool art before they head.
I'm, I move to repeal. Resolution twenty-three sixteen.
I think you're just moving to approve the current resolution in front of you.
This, this does it all, you could do it all in one time, it does it all at once, okay, yeah, then I, that's what I do.
What she said, alright.
Kushner?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, you guys had to wait around a long time for this, didn't you? We have appearances to the council not listed on the agenda, number one is Max, come on up, Max.
Oh, go with him, sorry. No, thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, uh, Max Wright, an hour, uh, three seventeen North Holden, uh, just my usual disclaimer, I'm not here representing any organizations, or my business tonight, I'm here as a private citizen. Uh, longtime resident here in Warrensburg. Or my business tonight, I'm here as a private citizen, uh longtime resident here in Warrensburg. Um I said I would uh come back after the budget was passed. Congratulations on a successful uh budget being passed again. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the October meeting, but I wanted to uh be in front of you tonight to uh. Once again, remind you about my uh speech back in August um about the the homeless situation downtown. Uh our downtown business owners are still talking about it. We still do have uh issues happening downtown. I know I've. Had the opportunity to speak with most of the city council. I had a opportunity with the uh city attorney and with Chief Munster Menda. Talk about my situation in particular, um but also would uh any other citizen be afforded that opportunity to talk with all those individuals? Would my fiancee have that opportunity if she was the one that was attacked on the sidewalk, walking around downtown? We have an issue downtown and I'm not saying that it is everyone uh that is downtown, not saying that it's just our homeless population. Uh but we have an issue with not prosecuting people that are committing crimes downtown. Um things are happening and it is not being resolved. So I'm not sure what the exact solution is. Um I would love to talk more about it. I know we've talked quite a bit about it. Uh but our downtown business owners are feeling it. Our visitors coming to Warrensburg are feeling it. I know we had a lot of discussion about flock cameras tonight. Flock cameras only track vehicles. They don't track the people that are committing the crimes that don't have the vehicles. So we we need to be looking at solutions for the issues that we're running into. I know that. We had an issue downtown a few weeks ago. Our police department did a great job uh making sure that, you know, no uh uh. There was no lethal options used in that incident, uh but my little sister was standing right there inside a hero's working that night. She's sixteen years old. So props to the police department for getting that taken care of, but what could we have done to try to prevent that stuff from happening in the first place? So I'll keep it short and sweet. I uh know it's been a long night, but I just wanted to bring that all to your guys' attention again, so thank you very much.
I would like to understand more about that frankly, because I don't understand the, you know, the legal side of. What the city is able to do and what we're not able to do, so.
Be happy to answer that question very simply. Um first of all, in terms of prosecuting cases. Anytime somebody is arrested and issued a citation for behavior downtown, that would be a municipal violation. It comes to my desk. Uh there are multiple cases that have been prosecuted. In fact, the case that. Mr. Ridenhour is talking about, we talked about, is being prosecuted. Uh it is currently in a deferred status as a result of that person being a member of Drug Treatment Court. And so in an effort to allow that person to receive treatment. And to get to a position where they may be able to be employed and have a place to live. Which hopefully would be the goal I would expect from people. Uh we are giving that person that chance. The prosecution did not go away, it's simply being held right. Uh if the person doesn't successfully treat, complete treatment court, then they will come before the criminal court for that purpose, so. Uh and that's something that is fairly common and some, it's a practice that we've had for a long time. Is to give people that chance if it's if it's that type of an offense and if they, it's, you know, related to that. Um but as far as the the issue of whether it is. And and really, the the homelessness question is the one that this always comes back to. Um and of course, you know, we were talking about the Fourth Amendment issues earlier tonight. Well, that's an Eighth Amendment issue because. It goes into cruel and unusual punishment issues. Uh long time ago, in lots of different cases, it was ruled that you can't make laws that criminalize existing, basically. You can't make it illegal to be on a sidewalk, you can't make it illegal to be dressed a certain way, you can't make it illegal to be homeless. You can't make it illegal to exist. And so in terms of prevention, outside of having. Doubling our police force and having them constantly walking up and down, tripling probably is a better word. And having them constantly walking up and down the streets. I don't know how to prevent homelessness. I don't know how to prevent crime. And if somebody invents those solutions, that'd be great. That'd be wonderful. Uh to date, I don't know that they exist, so we will continue to enforce and. When calls come in, people have to sign a complaint. They have to call the police. They have to sign the complaint and they have to be willing to come and testify at court. And I have found through the years that people really don't like doing that. They don't like it. So people have to put themselves in a position to unfortunately be the witness in the case. They have to come forward. And they have to be a part of the prosecution. And to the question of whether or not other people would be afforded the opportunity. When people reach out and talk. The reason I had that conversation with Mr. Ridenhour is because he reached out. He called, so I returned the call. If somebody else called, I would return that call as well. I get calls from people all the time asking about cases. I return every single one of them. So the only cases we don't prosecute are cases where there is a good reason for it. Uh perhaps somebody has done a bunch of community service before they ever get in front of me, because they are so repentant of what they have done. And so that might get dismissed. There are, there are cases like that. Uh but generally speaking, if it comes from our police department, it's gonna get signed by me, it's gonna go in front of Judge Hall. And it's gonna be decided right here in this room. And we're here just about every Tuesday. We won't be here tomorrow because it's Veterans Day. But we're here just about every Tuesday and it's open and anybody can come and watch and they can sit here just like they do here tonight. And I invite people to come.
Thank you.
I I do, uh thanks for bringing that up. I do want to just make sure the record is set straight that I'm not asking. And none of the business owners that spoke back in September are asking for, you know, an eradication of uh homelessness in Warrensburg. We understand that, you know, that's a whole issue on its own. We're not asking for that. We're just asking for the crimes to be prosecuted on. And I did have that conversation. I think there are some other things we can unpack on that. We're not gonna get into tonight, but. Yeah, I, this is a, this is not a, you know, we want the National Guard to be coming into Warrensburg and be walking through our streets. That's not what we're asking for. We're just asking for crimes to be prosecuted on, so thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Max.
I have three names on here appearances, but I think they left, like they're here with wiggles and giggles, but Ashley, Tiffany and Harley. They've signed, so it looks like they've left.
That was fun.
Yep. Uh miscellaneous matters from the mayor and or city council. Uh Phil, I just had the, had the one question, would not expect an answer tonight, but I've had a couple of people approach me about. Like a large limb, kind of like what we had the storm drop off place. Had a couple of people ask in the future if there's a potential, but if you'd look into that and. But uh there's some people saying that they've got big limbs, they've got big bundles and. And trying to put it in those little brown bags or bundle it up into the links uh little hard. And I don't, we don't know the cost and and all that, but anyway, you already know we uh in contact, if you'd look into that. Thanks.
I could do something where it's open, you know, we could do both pickup. Like on the third pickup of the month, maybe the third. Whatever of the month, that that uh drop off place could be open. With somebody supervising so that we don't get.
Trash.
That kind of stuff that we were getting over here.
Yeah, I think that's the practical difficulty is securing it in such a way that it's controlled access supervised drop off. So we're not after hours or otherwise getting things that we can't process.
Yeah, for sure.
Look into it. Thank you very much. City staff, uh any other miscellaneous matters? City staff update, city staff update, city manager?
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. I'm pretty confident that you're aware of the status of street work in the community, so I don't want to steal Phil's thunder. I'll uh continue to let him give that report. Um I did uh attend, uh Jessica and I both attended the uh city managers conference. Um recently, it was in Tampa. I took the, it is a little bit of a personal segue, but I think it ties back to tonight's meeting. Um so I took the opportunity to take a couple of uh personal days and uh my wife and daughter came at our expense and we. Had a couple of days on the beach before the conference. Well, my daughter, my youngest daughter asked whether she could attend IC May sessions. I didn't really realize she had an interest, but she might have a mild interest in public service. So she attended, she attended two days worth of sessions and one of them was uh from a international speaker. And and her whole premise was uh how do you make the right decision? And so she put forward a, it wasn't a hypothetical, it was something that had gone on in England, I believe, but. Long story short, they're providing the community service at considerable expense for eight people. Then the financially, the numbers just didn't work. They looked at it and they chose to continue to provide the service. So she put it to the group. And for small table discussion, how do you determine whether they made the right decision or you've made the right decision? We all talked amongst our groups and some of them reported out. In my table, you know, e- everyone was talking about, was it legal, was it moral, was it ethical, it was, did the numbers work? In my table, my comment was, over my career, I've come to the conclusion, if you run the right process. Then you're making the right decision and I kind of left it at that. Well, after forty minutes of her presentation, the conclusion was, if you've run the right process, you've made the right decision. And I say all that to say, I think that's what we did tonight. We were, we ran the right process as a related flock and. You you came to a conclusion and and because we ran the right process, it is the right decision. Either way, it would have been the right decision. Um so staff's trying to support you in in that more so than tell you what the end result should be.
Thank you.
Which mark, uh city staff updates, administrative services department? Yay. City staff update, city clerk?
Uh nothing outside of what is in the packet if you have any questions.
City staff updates, uh community development?
Written report speaker.
Thank you, Barbara.
I like the new format.
Yeah, that's nice. Yeah.
City staff update, fire department, Chief Jennings? City staff updates, Parks and Recreation Department, Chris? City staff updates, police department?
I'm not breaking the mold. It's gonna be short and sweet though. Um just real quick, uh addressing what Adam had said. We responded a couple of weeks ago uh to an individual breaking a flower pot downtown. We located the individual and we were going to arrest them. However, the uh people reporting that from the downtown business. Not sure who it was, uh did not want to press charges. So. Prosecution comes, but we need the complaint signed. And if officers are trying to tell them. You know, if they are not taking the complaint and willing to take the complaint, then I need to know about that. My attention, but um if uh if a crime's being reported, please sign a complaint.
So and and to build on that, as a clarification, the officer, i- the crime, the officer cannot have their.
Yeah.
Rights violated, they need an independent party.
That's correct. We need the reporting party to sign the complaint and come to court as as a witness. Now, if the officer witnessed it happening, uh they could, they could proceed with the charges if the individual still wanted to. Press charges, right? They could decline to press charges, but if they said, yeah, I want the charge, I want. Press on them for the property damage, the officer could write the ticket if they witnessed it. And then maybe keep that person out of court for their property, but that'd be an Adam's decision. Um usually you need the property owner there as well. Um with that, uh and addressing the other issues of possible cameras, that was in the flock uh uh demo was. We were going to have four, I believe, four live cameras. So the other readers, but live cameras as well downtown. So that was part of that as well.
Yeah.
And we just lost another investigator, so.
So the, the live cameras downtown, can you still have those?
Um through, with, they would be LPR as well, so.
Wasn't LPR?
License plate reader.
Oh.
You know, live aspect of the ability to monitor from a central location, what's going on.
Okay, I thought he was a- addressing so that you could see some of the things that are going on.
We would be able to, is what we were gonna be able to as well.
Yes.
With the live cameras. But it would also read license plate readers. It's license plate readers.
That's all one camera?
On the downtown area, we're paying, I was gonna pay extra for that, yeah.
That was one of my questions and chief answered that, that if a pedestrian passed in front of that while the license plate was being read. Would, you would have had that data, right? Or it was a.
We would have the data from the license plate, but we would also be able to see the person.
Person, yeah.
Committing a crime that was down there or not committing a crime. It would have been live view, so.
Yeah. And so that, that debate about the, there was, there would not have been. Every, uh I don't know how to say this. Other than the, the video, that person's demographics would not be put into a database. We would have the recording of.
It would just can be in line. The license plate would have been over here, the vehicle driving by and someone walking. That would just would have been a person that we would have had to identify um ourselves, but. Anyway, just, we are trying to take outside box for that.
Yeah, that is, that is something that could, we could have had.
And then the other uh one, the one other thing, the buslethal situation that was downtown.
Yes.
That was not an individual that was homeless. That person had a home, so just addressing that as well.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity, I meant to tell you this earlier, to witness several of your officers, uh a neighbor of mine, response to a. Very, very potentially dangerous situation. A compliment on how they handled it and the outcome, that that individual was getting the appropriate help he needs now. And uh things went real well.
On a better path, right? Sometimes the individuals need help. So if we can give them the right help, then things.
Yeah, see, uh that proves that the CIT training works.
CIT is excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you can find the officer's name, I'd like to pass that on.
I don't know, there's four of them.
That's about our whole department now.
My house.
Appreciate it. City staff update, public works?
Where are you gonna pave now? The Mill and Overlay program is complete. We have been talking with the. Contractors to come back and touch up some areas that are a little, you know, wavy, bumpy. Um we're still talking with them. We will still have some. You know, lane shifts because we're gonna have striping come in and do the striping. McGuire Street is open, but we're having the signal guys are in there. We still have a lot of concrete. So you'll still have lane shifts, hopefully no full closures. Uh depending on the signal guys, they might need a bucket truck up and they're gonna stop you from going underneath that, so. For the most part, it's open.
Is the, I'm assuming it's the cable company that's the drawback on getting the rest of the poles?
Uh no, it's all, I believe most of the cable companies are. Done, but I'd have to ask you.
Yeah, they're, they're just, I, driving down to the, there's several of the poles that are cut off and ready to be pulled, but there's still something hanging on them.
That would be the cable companies then. Um and so we will have some lane shifts and. Possibly a lane shutdown, but should be good to go. Uh striping, concrete. The, all that's gonna be hopefully within the next three weeks.
It's great. I traveled it twice.
It's very exciting.
It's great, yeah.
It's nice.
Yeah.
Cedar Court.
Uh Cedar Court, we are ready to move forward with that. The contractor has the agreement. And we're just hoping to talk to them soon and get that project going full force. We will be working on one lane, removing contract, come back, put back in. And we will work with the homeowners to make sure that they have access to their houses while we do the work.
Is there a delay in getting the contractor uh to sign or get back to you or something like that?
Gave it to the.
Before last, last meeting?
And he just hasn't. With the Mill and Overlay crew in our street apartment has been busy with that. And then the contractor hadn't reached out, so we're moving forward, but with today. We have some people gone, tomorrow's Veterans Day. Five Wednesday, I'm sure we'll be in contact with them and.
So and asphalt is temperature sensitive or concrete, you can work into colder temperatures with blankets to cover it, so. That's from a scheduling standpoint, it's not as problematic.
It's supposed to be beautiful Thursdays.
Yeah.
It's Missouri fall.
Back to McGuire, sorry. Uh are there still some sidewalks yet to be done or all the sidewalks that are gonna be done, done?
So there's still sidewalks around North Rover and Gay that are gonna be done.
Okay.
And then you might touch on the emerging contaminants section of it.
So the emerging contaminants grant is that. Spot where we're putting in the stormwater detention basin, that is in front of Arby's. So from north to Emerson. Now, the sidewalks on both sides were not updated, the curb on both sides were not updated. That is all included in that emerging contaminants grant.
Right.
Um we are, I think the last easement was signed and mailed off today. So we will be coming forward with those easements to present so that they can be recorded. Um and then we are waiting on the. Tribal letters to get back to the state. And then we'll communicate with state and get that process going and then we gotta send it out for. RFP so that we can get a contractor on board so that we can hopefully start this spring to get that process. And we're going to disrupt McGuire again for hopefully a shorter period of time.
Oh, yes.
But you're going to cut a twenty by one hundred foot pole in McGuire. Drop that down in there. So it's going to be a big Right. So people need to know that we know that that's going to happen.
Area only had a two inch mill cap put on it. It was not dug down and re-faced. We know that we're going to come back to that area. We're going to dig it up. We're putting this detention to help our stormwater issues. And then we're going to fix the road in that area, curb, sidewalk, grass. All that's going to be done.
That's one of the things that would be great to promote now and then closer to the time so that, I mean, there, there will be complaints. We all know there'll be complaints no matter what because people don't watch these closely enough, but, um, we just want people to have the best chances possible to know that, yes, this was very planned. And there's a reason why we would have done it all at the same time if we could have, but it was just not possible.
The, um, the sidewalks around those streets that you mentioned, intersections, you, you mentioned like three or four intersections. Okay, so is that because you can't finish them because the new lights are not in to be, the poles aren't in to be set?
The poles are not, the signal poles are not set yet. They are working.
Are they here?
They are here.
Okay, I thought I saw them today.
All the equipment, all the supplies are here. The contractor, Ytech, is out there. They're working on it. In fact, capital was helping, helping those contractors get things prepared and set up. I think they have north set up today. I think that's what Neil said.
I saw them there.
Once set up, then, then you can finish those intersections.
Ytech gets all the signal heads and all that and the wiring done. Then capital can come back and then they will start working on the sidewalk around the signal. I mean, they've got to remove the old signal base. I mean, so it's not just a one day.
Right.
It's a, they said a week per, and then we've got three of them to do.
For intersection.
For intersection.
Okay.
Quick question on the emergent, excuse me, on the emergent, uh, on the emergent contaminant grant. Well, how long is that process scheduled for? You know, from start to finish, when we start that?
So I don't have, we haven't reached out to the contractor to figure out. We're still working with the state. They've given us the go ahead except for the, last letter from the tribal communities. And once that comes back in, once we've turned in our portion of that paperwork that we'll get from them, they've got to respond. Once that gets done, we'll go out the engineers, make sure we finish up the design. It's only a ninety percent design. Finish up the design, get it up to a contractor for a best price. Then we'll get the contractors in, give us the price, then we will award that bid and then we'll have the schedule of completion.
Okay.
I'm hoping we'll have the contractor on board by March and then I would say August, maybe a little later.
I, I realize I'm telling you things you know, but for those that may be listening, uh, at home, the, the emerging contaminants grant addressed the persistent stormwater problem. It also leveraged funding to, yeah, get the cost down for the rethink McGuire project. And it, the end benefit of it is in addition to the stormwater, it's paying for that section of street work on McGuire. The timing didn't line up just because of the grant opportunity, pursuing the grant and then having to get through the process that's attached to the grant. But, uh, when all is said and done, it's a net benefit to our bottom line and the community's, uh, financial picture.
I have one last question.
I have two more, but go ahead.
You have two more?
No, I had other projects to tell you about, but go ahead. What's your, one more question?
The gas line break, who broke it? And I was out walking that day and I walked down to, um, Sonic, I think I got as far as Sonic and then I could smell it. But there was a huge, huge pile of sand or dirt in the middle of McGuire Street.
Yeah, I mean, so.
So did they blow up McGuire Street?
They didn't blow up McGuire Street. They just scraped off a cap of a one inch or inch and a half line. So they were, they were digging up the material so that they could repack it with better material. And whenever they were running that bucket, they just scraped off a one and a half inch cap.
Was it the gas company that did it?
No, it was our contractors who were doing the McGuire. You know, they were digging up material so they could put better material in so that it would compact better and it would pass the roll test.
Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
All right, well, I'm going to bring up Lions Lake now. So as you've seen Lions Lake, hopefully you've seen, uh, Lions Lake contractors out there digging. They've got the southeast portion dug. And now they're moved on to the northeast portion. If you see the trail over on the hillside.
It's great.
It looks really nice. Uh, they've got some touch up to do on that, of course, still, but they're working on it. And, uh, lots of stuff's happening out there and it's looking good. The plant expansion is going well. Uh, last time I bragged on it, it had a little pickup, but it's back up and going. Lots of dirt moving, concretes being poured, uh, so lots of stuff. Jim?
Just one more.
It's not yours, but question on everybody's lips. When do you really think Fifty and Fifty West will be open?
It's supposed to be this week.
Well, that's what they said last week and week before.
So we actually got an email the other day last week saying it's going to be open this week.
The Business Fifty entrance and necessarily the rest of the.
Right, no, just Business Fifty and Fifty. I've been here multiple weeks.
It's supposed to be this week, hopefully. I actually went, drove out there today and, uh, I saw a lot of stuff being removed. Lot of the cones and things like that on our side.
I just, hopefully release it.
Lions Lake, there were two, um, large Why can't I think of the word? Like drainage pipes, pipes. They were very large that were in the, you know, at the bottom of the lake that were revealed.
It's his grandson's project. That was an Eagle, that was an Eagle Scout project done by my grandson through the previous city manager and Public Works Department and Parks Department out there. And I'm assuming it's going to continue or not.
I don't think any of those, the plants are alive.
Probably not, but there were specific quiet plants put in there for, oh, to help with pulling out the nitrates from the golf course and stuff like that. And they floated there for quite a while, but that was an Eagle Scout project.
Water gardens, okay.
We have to find someone to redo some of it. I know that they pulled one up and they said it, it survived.
And then the, the art that used to be out there, do, um, the bobbers and there were a couple of the things, uh, I know I've asked you, but I cannot remember. I'm sorry.
Stored away.
Can you please, okay, they're stored away somewhere and they're thinking about getting replaced, right? The bobbers, the art pieces.
There are two bobbers.
There are only two.
Three.
There were three, right.
The third barber is
Bit the dust.
Gone.
That's right, gone to the barber.
Who the artist is? So if that's something, um, that wants to be reconstructed, able to do that and
Well, and they were out there till the lake was drained and
Two, yeah, the two.
There was three, but, um, since I've been here, I've asked for this other barberess, which is, um, a, a long kind of barber. And I, I get the answer. Um, it was destroyed or it's not been here. So I don't know where it is. So we have two of the three boxes.
His first, I forget his first name. His last name's Shaw. Married to his wife Laura. He's a professor at UCM.
Yes.
Justin, thank you.
And so he's local and so he could build another barber.
I haven't asked that question. I just know that we know the name of the person.
Right, right. Like the art council, it, uh, replace the missing barber so that there's three, because you plant flowers and threes and trees and threes or fives. You don't just do two.
Unless you're British and they do everything. Thank you.
We're out of last question.